Okay, we are live with Candace Bailey. Candace has invited us to our house. This is Aurora Ideas. And we're here in Ward 4. We've got a big election coming up. Candace is running for the at-large Aurora City Council seat. And yeah, this, we're heating up. We're getting closer and closer to Election Day. There's, we can talk about whatever you want to talk about Candace, but for me, what's most important, if, yeah, this is one thing that I really want to know about you more than anything else, is when have you faced some real major adversity in your life? Uh, how did it affect you for better or for worse? How did it change your perspective on life? And uh, yeah, how did it just change you going forward? And how do you live your life differently because of it?
Hmm, so um, one of the things that is well-known about me is that I was incarcerated um, in the early 2000s. Um, I went to the penitentiary, um, and that indefinitely changed my life, Dolan. There wasn't a part of me that was not changed from my incarceration. My physical, mental, emotional, spiritual, economic. I mean, there wasn't a place that wasn't touched because of my stint in the carceral system. It taught me many things. It taught me about the way that the system manages human beings. It taught me about the purpose of the carceral system. Um, it taught me who I did not want to be. It taught me that the people that you believe that are inside of the prison system are not who you're told they are. Um, they're people just like you and I. They have experienced a level of trauma or something that has happened in their life that took them on a different path and trajectory. It was literally a left when others made a right. I think that it it enhanced my ability to have compassion. It enhanced my ability to see human beings as human beings, as whole humans, and not thinking about their economic status, not thinking about other things that have really tainted my view of humans that had dehumanized people for some reason in my own mind because of the things that had happened in my own life and my own experiences. And so for me, um, that adversity gave me the capacity to do a couple of things to sit with the best parts of myself and the worst decisions that I'd ever made. Um, to look at accountability and to be accountable for the first time in my life in such a different way than I ever had before. And realizing and recognizing that although I had made a bad decision, it wasn't a life sentence. It wasn't something that I couldn't come back from. It wasn't something that I could not do better. I couldn't ever change from or evolve from. And so it gave me the capacity to see that for every human being and to understand that as humans, we're gonna make mistakes. If you are not the worst mistake you ever make, um, you're actually the best thing that you show up as in life. And so my goal has always been since my incarceration, to show up as the best Candace that I could possibly be every day.
Yeah. So how long were you in the prison?
So I was actually inside of prison for about three years and then I was in a halfway house and then I was on parole.
Wow, wow. And so this isn't really talked about a lot, especially within local jurisdiction. But I don't know how much uh, control the city council has over like the criminal justice system. I know that they create policing, policing policy, but uh, so I have a roommate who was actually in prison. He had three DUIs and he was in prison for like six months and uh, but it really affected him. We can go more into that, but what are some major hurdles that you faced when you were in the criminal justice system? Um, yeah, what, what major things would you change about the criminal justice system? I guess here in Colorado and I, I don't know if like California just recently abolished uh, private prisons. I don't know if we still have private prisons in Colorado. I know that the ICE, the Federal Detention Center, is that a public-private immigration? Is that connected to the NSA National Security Agency?
Um, it is not connected to NSA. I don't believe that. I don't know that answer, but um, the same people who own the ICE detention facilities here own the halfway houses and the penitentiary system here. And so
And is that private?
Yes, it's all private.
So it's contracted out by the federal government?
That is correct. That is correct.
Most people don't know that.
Right. Most people do not know that. So actually, the penitentiary system um, is the largest grossing economy in the state of Colorado. It beats out cattle and wheat. Now think that through. Um, so the carceral system, the state penitentiaries that are here are privately owned. Uh, there are no longer state-owned facilities and there are no longer state-owned halfway houses or community corrections facilities. They are all in the private industrial complex. Um, so inside of that prison industrial complex are places like Core Civic. Core Civic owns the ICE detention facility in Aurora, but it also owns, I think, like 50% of the halfway houses in the state of Colorado. And so when you're talking the prison industrial complex, prison duplicates itself in so many different facets that we don't overstand that. I was just having this conversation strangely, uh, because I'm doing a monologue around my incarceration. And we were talking about the idea that inside of the penitentiary, there is one payment that is made for my physical body. So when you become um, an inmate in the Colorado State Penitentiary System, you get a number. So they enumerate you. When you become enumerated, there is a dollar amount attached to you that is paid to that penitentiary for you to be there every single day. So whatever that dollar amount may be, it may be a hundred and fifty dollars a day, two hundred dollars a day. Do the math. If we have sixty thousand people inside of our penitentiary system times a dollar a day, I'm sure you can figure it out, right? Well, when you talk about things like community corrections, which is supposed to be a form of restorative justice, what happens is the Department of Corrections is being paid because you still have a DOC number. But then you're transferred into a halfway house, which is community corrections. Community corrections receives a check for you to be there. And then you, as the client inside of community corrections, must pay rent to the facility that you are in. So there is a triple payment standard that is happening if you're entering into a system like a halfway house.
So you're saying when you're in the halfway house, you have to pay rent?
Oh, yes. And they're being paid and DOC is still being paid. So there is a triple payment that is happening within the prison industrial complex. So just like we talk about moving the dollar inside communities of color, like the black dollar lasts for eight minutes, I think, within the black community. The Asian community, it's like five days. Well, in the prison industrial complex, the money never leaves itself because it's all the same entity running all of these arms and branches. So the prison industrial complex sprouts out in so many different ways. They owe, they own the place where you go take a UA and a breathalyzer. So your court ordered to go there, right?
So that was the problem with my friend is that when he got out, he had to take a urine analysis, um, a monthly, or it was random. I think it was twice a month.
Yeah.
And, but the problem was that he lived in Aurora, but he didn't have a car.
Right.
And since it was random, it could be in the middle of the week. And if he has to go to work and he can't get to the UA, it takes, if he has to take the bus, it takes two hours to get there, two hours back. What are you supposed to do? Just to take time off from work? And so he, he wasn't able to go to the UAs and so what is it? The Arapahoe County Human Services, a lot of that is based in Littleton, which is like, you know, the wealth, one of the wealthiest areas in Arapahoe County.
Right.
And like when most of the people who are affected by the crim, or a lot of them who are affected by the criminal justice system uh, reside in Aurora, and so they have to get to Littleton.
Correct.
And so it's just set up for those people who are less fortunate to just like really just fall fall through the cracks.
The very demographic that they say that they are helping to come back to community wholly is the same community that they are disenfranchising. Because guess where the halfway house that I was at was at? I was listed in Arapahoe County because I lived in Aurora. That's where my address was. The halfway house was in Arapahoe County, but it was all the way in Littleton, exactly what you are saying. So the setup was no different. It was the setup in the same exact way that you're actually displaying. I'm in a place where whiteness is everywhere, like the percentage of white, black people who live in Littleton are, is less than 1%. It's like point 2.5%. Some ridiculous number. Now, think about that. The only people who are black in that community are in a halfway house. And Littleton is saturated with federal halfway houses, state halfway houses, sex offender halfway houses. Littleton is literally saturated. But everyone resides because of redlining in a predominantly lower income area, much like the city of Aurora, right?
Aurora.
Right, much like the city of Aurora. And I use that example because in Aurora, Ward 1 and Ward 6, there's a hundred and forty thousand dollar income gap between those wards. It is the largest income gap in our state in a city municipal area, literally. So right now, and that's the median, so think that through. So that means that the median income in Ward 1 is seventeen thousand dollars. That's the middle amount of money. We're not talking about even our lowest.
So we'll get back to that, but let's talk more about what your experience was like in the prison system. So like, I want to know, because I've heard horror stories about like you get paid, like if you want to work. First of all, can you opt into working or opt out?
You don't get to opt in or out. You are working regardless.
You're working and you're getting paid?
Uh, well, if sixty cents a day is paid, sure.
So when you were there, you're, if you chose to work, you were making sixty cents?
That's not how it works.
I mean, if you were working, you were, I mean, you were working, so you were getting sixty cents a day?
Correct. And then if you owe money?
No.
No, it hasn't changed. So there are layers to the way that you can earn more money and get into positions that allow you to be in those places. So there are many layers to the ways that you get to that. It's dependent upon how much time you have. Um, so how long were you sentenced to? What was your crime? Um, what is your number? So you have a numeration system inside of the penitentiary that says, I am, so there's a scale, we'll make it up, zero to a hundred. If I have violence, that's a count inside of the penitentiary. If I had a violent crime, that's another number. If I had early childhood trauma, that's a number. If I have less than a high school education, that's more numbers. So whatever, and so there are pieces of who you are that start from the moment that you are born, that you're not aware of, that that prison system is tracking, whether you know it or not. And so what happens is you come in and there are numbers that are already indicative of what you did in school. If you were in trouble in school, because all of those records follow you. Did you have mental health issues? Were you on psychotropics? Um, do you have health issues? Do you have diet restrictions? What is your religious affiliation?
All of your medical data?
You're right. You are.
But what about the HIPAA laws? There, those are just
If they all work together, so think about it from this capacity. This was one of the greatest lessons I learned when I went to the penitentiary. I was in college when I went to the penitentiary. And one of the things that I watched with my own two eyes was Big Pharma running the show. So what happens is when you come in and you go into intake in the prison, you go through a system of testing. So they test your physical, your mental, they test it all. You go through, you go fill in bubbles just like you're in elementary school.
So they're collecting all this data on you without your consent necessarily and
Initially.
And then you have no control over where that data goes. So all of your privacy is
Right. Okay. So initially in your life, that's what's happening and you don't get it because you're enumerated at several times in your life. So I think we need to talk about enumeration because that's gonna help you to get where I'm going. So when you're born, you're enumerated by a social security number. Then as time wore on, we got an electronical, electronic um, healthcare system, right? So you know, you started signing off for everything to be electronic. You can receive electronic notification. It's put in this electronic database, blah, blah, blah. You are enumerated when you go into the penitentiary. You get a number. You're no longer Dolan. You are inmate number 120523. Then you're enumerated by the situations that have happened in your life. So that testing gives you another number. So you're enumerated when you get a social security number, then you're put into a healthcare system, then a school number, because you have a number connected to you in school. You have a number, right? So then go forward.
Well, I didn't, in some schools, I don't know.
All schools. Every school, you have a student ID number. It does not matter where you go because there has to be a way in the education system. That's why you take all the PSATs and all the Colorado SA. All these things are directly connected in systems. All of these numbers directly link you to yourself. And we've never put this together, right? We've never talked about this in our capacity in our nation. We've never had this conversation, right? And I think we have to start having it, right?
So yeah, I mean, I'm basically, I'm gonna get scatterbrained here, but like
Watch, I'm gonna tie it together for you so you get it all together. So when you become enumerated, you go to the penitentiary, they do an intake diagnostics of you. It's a diagnostics, just like when you go to the doctor, they take your blood pressure, height, weight, all of those things that could affect you. It's the same way when you go to the penitentiary, they do a diagnostics. And you come out with a score. And that score dictates what happens with you inside of the penitentiary system. It dictates what kind of education you can get if you're allowed to. It dictates what kind of job you can get if you are allowed to get one of those jobs. It dictates when you are allowed, or if you're allowed to go to a halfway house because you may not qualify if those numbers aren't right.
Yeah, so they're saying what happened to you in the past is correlated to what you will do in the future.
Period. Every aspect of your human being is dictated down to enumeration. They turn your entire existence into numbers to equate what will happen with you next. Period.
So uh, when you were in prison, uh, did you work for eight hours a day?
Yes, every day. More, sometimes longer.
Make you get up at a certain time?
Well, if you, everyone starts in the kitchen. So you're automatically assigned um, to the kitchen in the women's penitentiary, most penitentiaries. Um, you're automatically assigned to the kitchen unless you're given a different work order detail through your case manager. And generally, you haven't seen your case manager enough to have a conversation about putting in for other jobs. So you automatically get flushed to the kitchen.
And so when you leave, I mean, maybe you want to talk more about like what a day is like in the prison system aside from just working? Is there anything else that sticks out that is kind of unique or something that our viewers should know?
Institutionalization. I think that we have to talk about institutionalization and the ingrainment of institutionalization. Um, from the moment that we get our first breath on the planet, we are institutionalized. And so when I was in the penitentiary, I was looking at the way that we were preemptively institutionalized via school, via all of the ways that we do not consciously take in, and you and I were talking about psychology. What we are absorbing is, is institutionalization and the preemptive for institutionalization. And so that experience inside of the penitentiary is notched up a hundred and fifty amps so that every move you make is so calculated because you are afraid of what the penalty is on the other side of that movement, right? And so that institutionalization exists from the time that we're born in the United States until the time that we die. It's called colonization and really it is implemented and carried out in the lives of black indigenous and people of color. Now
Set up by white people.
Right, well, it went from the plantation to now the penitentiary. That was the evolution. And that's what we must get through our head. We went from the plantation to the penitentiary. And we have not made that connector quite yet. And we must because this is the evolution of white supremacy and we've not touched on it and we definitely need to. That is what people of all races must understand. Because there is not a connector for middle white America. It was right about the time of the opioid crisis where middle white America said, "I'm not black, I'm OJ. I have the same experience as you."
So the opioid crisis, what, what time period is that? Like the late?
Late 90s, early 2000s is when it started to hit. And that was when middle white America's incarceration rate began to skyrocket. You were seeing something totally different. And so the idea that we are having a conversation that it is black people who are incarcerated more is a lie. Our white counterpart, especially in Colorado, exists at an astounding number. Excuse the dogs. Can you get the dogs, please? I'm sorry, my dogs. Um, so the things that we are not thinking about in our
So I gotta, I wanted to talk more about the prison, uh, like a daily, a day in the life of prison. So do you, like, what kind of downtime do you have? Do you have, do you get a recess? Like you get to go outside and like, can you lift weights, play basketball, whatever? Do you get time outside? How much, if you do, how much time do you get outside per day?
So that depends. So you can, it depends what your status is. And again, that's why the enumeration system is important.
So say if you're high status.
So high status means you don't go anywhere.
Or say if like, you know, you're behaving, blah, 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 you have good numbers.
So you likely have what's like gym time, rep time. Uh, probably about an hour and you can sign up for different things or you can utilize that time if you're not incapacitated.
So you have, also have access to the library system?
Um, you have to sign up for it and it just depends what their capacity is.
And so they would deliver the books to your cell?
Well, that's in the county. In, in the penitentiary, you go to
The library?
The library, right? Or the law library. Yeah, it's a law library.
A library within the prison or?
It's so
Or is it connected to the public library?
Law library. Oh, no, it's not connected to the public. Well, I don't know about in 2021. I was in the penitentiary in the early 2000s, so I don't know if they have combined those two systems yet. I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
Um,
So were you able to further your education while you were in the prison? Could you take classes? They gave you the Bible, right? You walk in the prison, you walk in your cell and there's like a Bible sitting right there?
No.
No, okay.
That's all a fable.
Okay, I just like made that, whatever.
That's a fable. There's lots of fables. There's lots of fables.
Yeah, so I guess we can, so is there anything else you would like us to know about the criminal justice system that needs to be changed? Or yeah, tell us more about the day.
I mean, you want the day in the life. I feel like I need to stick with your day in the life because we'll be here all day if we talk about what needs to be changed in the criminal justice system. Um, a day in the life, you're waking up. Um, you're going to whatever job it is that you're required to be at.
Do they require you to get up at a certain time?
Well, you're required to be at a job at a certain time.
At what time is that?
Uh, depends what your assignment is. Yeah, so some people, you're assigned a 4:00 AM kitchen call. You've got to be up at the gate or at your unit's door by 3:30. Um, it just depends what your assignment is essentially.
Okay, alright. Uh, so yeah, what was I gonna say? I guess we can, so also like my friend was complaining about how like he had to make all these payments after he got out of the prison system. Now, when you were given a lawyer, did you have to pay for that lawyer at all? Or were you given a public defender and so therefore you didn't have to pay anything? Were there any kind of payments that you had to pay due to the crime that you committed once you left prison?
A ton, a ton. Um, so while in prison, um, you are paying other costs. So if you have restitution, it's coming out of your pay. If you have child support, it's coming out of your pay. So although it's sixty cents a day, or if you owe the doctor, it's coming out of that sixty cents a day. So just because you go to work, don't get it twisted. It does not mean that you're actually receiving a check per se. You may be just paying for what you owe because you needed healthcare. Because you needed to have your spleen removed because it was exploding inside of your body. Um, it could be because you have high blood pressure and you need blood pressure medication. Um, things that were pre-existent to you coming in, things that developed while you were there, things that develop because of the drugs that they're giving you, the psychotropics that they're testing on your body. Um, all of those things will be charged to you as if you did it to yourself, which is, you can get your ass whooped, excuse my French city of Aurora, um, by the police because they don't like your attitude that day. You can get all your teeth busted out of your mouth with their billy club. And guess what? You will be the one who pays for that. And you'll get up and you'll go to work every day. Oh, you will. Yes, you will. Or you'll be in the hole, solitary confinement, thirteen, twenty-three hours a day, an hour out supposedly a day, supposedly.
So do they provide counseling for you? Not even close. Only Martha Stewart, right? Martha Stewart, she gets to go to a country club prison or?
That was the funniest thing I heard all day.
All kinds of uh, resources. Unless you're Martha Stewart. And if you commit a white collar crime and you're Martha Stewart, you get to stay in a country club for like
That'd be a blue collar crime because that's what they're called, not white collar. White collar's a little different.
Martha Stewart, yeah, inside, whatever, so um.
So I need to hook up with Martha. If you find out that Martha had a counselor, Martha and I need to hook up. I don't, that's not real. You need fifty therapists after, during, before. Literally, because the system's already eaten you alive, you know? Literally.
So the police in Aurora, obviously the past couple of years have been really traumatic and dramatic. Um, but I know that you were, Nicole Johnston picked you for the Citizens uh, Task Force, Policing Task Force that was just created recently and within the past year. Uh, headed up by Dr. Ryan Ross. Um, but what's, yeah, I mean, I know that one of the biggest thing that came out of that was that we, uh, the Citizens Task Force, Policing Task Force wants to have the ability to uh, once there's a verdict or once there's, yeah. Or whatever, like you, you want, so you want to be able to this, you want to be able to have a committee that can look into it, an independent committee, and decide, have a say as to what, what happens in certain cases that are big, like Elijah McLean's, uh, for instance. Um, but is that going to go forward? Like, is that Citizens Task Force? Are you going to, are you still serving on that task force? And if so, did the city council approve that authority? Like, do you have the power to open up a case that has already been decided and to look at it and determine whether or not that was the right verdict?
So you asked a lot of questions in that one question. So I'm gonna try to scale it back and give you every answer chronologically. So the Police Oversight Committee, um, Nicole Johnston did head up the um, building of that committee. She did not choose herself specifically who was sitting on that committee. There was a process that was um, entailed that made sure that there was diversity and divestment against who would choose who sat in that off, or in that Police Oversight Committee. And so there were quite a lot of us. There were a lot of us. Um, that committee came up with recommendations for what we felt should be happening after um, a short period of time of education, which we wanted to happen for much longer, to be informed thoroughly and so that we can make an educated um, opinion and recommendation for our community and not half-cocked with half-information. And so the first months of our committee were interesting. We were looking at who the new incumbent police chief was. We actually interviewed that police, all of the applicants for the position, which was really strange because we were kind of stepping outside of our realm in some ways as an oversight committee. It was very strange. Um, then we were back in conversation for quite some time. There were issues because some of the rules weren't followed, like there was an active police officer on our committee that was divulged halfway through the committee. Um, that was a problem. That was one of the agreements. The police cannot police the police. Um, so we fought against that. Then we were rushed at the beginning of this year. Um, we were asked to come to conclusions very quickly and we pushed back exponentially because we need a deeper education. Um, we came up with the idea of the Office of OPAT. So it is the Office of Police Accountability Transparency and um, gosh, what is that last T? There's two Ts. Um, transparency.
The acronym is always
I know, they kill me because I can't, and I helped create it.
In your head and it's like, yeah.
I helped create it, which is even worse. I'll, I'll remember in a minute.
What matters more is what's going on.
So now we're at a standstill because sitting on the Budget Oversight Committee, um, I know that there is funding somewhere over here that is dangling. Um, however, we have not been given a green light. We have heard nothing back. And then the CP21 report came out with its um, own set of recommendations. So citizens and people who were chosen made one set of recommendations. And then the city went and hired a really expensive consulting team.
So there are all these groups. So that's the problem. We set up these groups. The politicians, they want, they want to look good, you know, it's something they can put on their, you know, their record or whatever.
Right.
They can campaign on it. And then like, you guys do all the, the, the hard work. You come up with recommendations, blah, 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 and then the Aurora City Council disappears.
And throws it all away.
You're still waiting for the green light. Meanwhile, that, you came out with
Eight more people have been now brutalized by police officers in that time easily. And that's just the eight we probably know about.
You presented that, your conclusions, like Dr. Ryan Ross presented that. Presented that, your conclusions, like Dr. Ryan Ross presented that maybe six months ago?
Easy.
It's been six months and nothing, yeah.
Radio silence and you know, that's a continued issue that.
That's what the politicians do. They set up these committees and then they want recommend the studies, blah, 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 but. I wish we could just use some, you know, common sense and just get, cut out the fat and get straight to the bone. Kind of thing because.
I don't think common sense is that common anymore sadly, and we're watching it play out in our real lives. Based on people's political agenda. You know, I'm, I'm not by any stretch of the imagination a politician, Dolan. I'm just a woman. I'm a mother. Um, I'm a teacher of civic engagement, like. I'm an advocate inside of juvenile justice. If your kid gets in trouble, I'm the one who goes to court with you to help hold your hand because Johnny messed up. Like that's what I've done professionally for a very long time. I do community reentry with families. So I do case management so that families have real help and we're not just putting Band-Aids on bullet wounds. It's not performative action. And that's what we see a lot in Aurora, just like with the police oversight committee. But I watched it being duplicated across the nation. I have friends everywhere and last year I was running amok across the nation. Um I was with Breonna Taylor's family in Louisville and I went to a community meeting there in Louisville, Kentucky. And it was crazy because they had the same thing. I said, where did you guys get the city of Aurora's flyer at? No, it is the same exact thing being duplicated across the country. And that really alarmed me because.
The same thing as in like politicians setting up these committees and then nothing happens, right? Cause they just do it for their own.
They're just making it seem like they're doing something. And like you said, it's something to run on because here comes election season.
Yeah, it's something they can put on their resume, yeah.
And for me, that's not the case. I have three black sons and a black daughter. In, in Aurora, black men and black women are the number one people who were likely to be murdered. Assaulted or abused by the police. What does that say to me? That says I have to get up.
So I think the, the policing oversight committee was created uh primarily because of what happened with Elijah McLean. Cause it made national headlines and all that.
International.
But it's always, you know, I mean, the past couple of years has been really bad nationwide with the policing and.
I think the past couple of years is when it came to light. It's always been bad, Dolan. If you're black, policing has never felt good. It's never looked good.
If you're black, you have to have a conversation with your kids about the police, like if the police confront you, make sure that you don't.
If you're black, you know that police were slave catchers, so they don't mean you any good. They look at you as a slave to be caught. It doesn't matter what year we're in. The culture has never changed. It's like saying that Judaism has changed. Jewish people are still Jewish people centuries later. The same rules and culture still apply. They may have changed just a little bit, like the uniform changed a little bit for police. In Judaism, there are certain things that have changed a little bit and evolved over time, right? But ultimately, the root of the tree is still the same and the soil is rotten. And so for anyone, any person of color that doesn't look like you, we lack a privilege, right? And we can't keep acting like that's not true. We're just now seeing it being recorded. The difference between the genocide in the transatlantic slave trade and the Holocaust was that one was recorded. One was recorded, the Holocaust was recorded. Do you understand? There was a recording of what happened to all of those human beings. There is not a recording. We won't even talk about it. We are saying critical race theory is irrelevant. If we won't talk about it and we won't identify it, we can't.
Talk to us about. Well, there's a lot, we're gonna kinda scatter here because that, it's, it's innovation. Some people call it ADD, I call it innovation.
I appreciate that.
Uh but where were we? So, God, I'm sorry, what were you talking about?
So I was talking about the Holocaust and the genocide on black bodies during the transatlantic slave trade. And the difference in the two is that one was recorded and one wasn't. And you made the reference saying that. It's really gotten bad in the past couple of years. No, white people just got to see it on TV in the last couple of years.
Okay, so this is what I, so the critical race theory, let's, can you tell us? What are your, so you're in favor of that?
Yes, definitely.
And can you tell us, give us an idea as to what critical, critical race theory is?
Critical race theory is the true history of the United States of America. It is talking about um white supremacy. Oppression, slavery, what truly happened in our nation. And not the, the pretty painted picture that we've been given, not the whitewashed version, what actually happened. The communities that were firebombed, Black Wall Street that was annihilated. A community in South Carolina, every single representative in that state was black. In that county was black and they were Republicans. They were, the whole city and town was caught on fire and annihilated. We must tell the truth about history.
So Black Recon, so there's a book called uh Black Reconstruction in America by WDB DeBois. Probably heard of it. But I learned about. The Emancipation Proclamation and what, kind of what really happened, why the frees were, uh the slaves were freed. Uh may, I mean, there were a number of reasons, but one of the things I read about in that book was the fact that the North. The North was. Control, had, had control over industry. They were the establishment, right? And a lot, in that book, it says that. One of the main reas- reasons the slaves were freed was because they wanted wages to go down. And white people were mad about freeing the slaves because. Their wages would go down because of it. Because if you have a larger work pool, creates more competition within the workforce and that drives wages down. And so you have the establishment in the North and then all the working white people said, the heck with this, I'm going down south. And it, and so, and that's where, where you had, that's where the difference between the South and the North was. Continue to be differentiated after the Emancipation Proclamation. So do you, do you agree with that? That one of the main reasons that slavery, that the slaves were freed was. Because of economic reasons and that the establishment wanted to drive down wages?
Gosh, that's so.
I don't know how, I don't know how relevant that is to our conversation to the city of Aurora today.
I think it's very relevant and I think we can pave the path to get there. So when we're talking about. What. Transpired during that time period where the North and the South were going to war. I think we have to look at, what was the reason that the United States was established? It was white men leaving. The rule of the queen because they did not wanna pay taxes and they wanted to own human beings. That was the reason they were leaving Britain, right? You can look back and see that in history. They're like, screw the queen.
Yeah, they didn't wanna have to pay taxes, yeah.
And but also, they wanted to own human beings. Look back in history. So this is part of critical race theory. There are things that the white man has hidden from even the own, your own white man, right? You don't even know. That the reason your forefathers come here is because they want to own human beings. It's not just taxation. It is the right to own our weapons, own human beings and not be taxed by the crown. It was those three things. That is why when the constitution is written, it says that anyone who looks like me or has a drop of this blood is considered. Three fifths a human being. That is how we get electoral colleges. So you've got to follow a large map. In our, our nation's history to get to where you are today. And until we're educated on that. You cannot bring your proximity to oppression together with me. See, what you see is you see a black woman, but I'm a white woman too. My grandparents were immigrants to this nation. In my home, I grew up with two white men and a white woman. There were eleven languages spoken in my home because my grandparents immigrated from Germany. And from Slovenia. My great grandparents were in Hitler's regime. So if you think I don't have white supremacy in my blood, think again. It's in me, it is not on me. But there is a point where my privilege and my skin do not correlate. I went to Smokey Hill High School. That didn't stop me from going to a penitentiary, did it? My white father, who you look much like strangely, um his whiteness wouldn't protect me from my blackness.
Yeah, so I have a question about, so basically in our politics today, you have. I mean, this is how, what I've read in the mainstream media or just media in general. Is that you have white rural America tends to be more Christian. And then you have. And poor white rural America, religious Christian. And then you have poor black. Urban America. And the poor black urban person is voting for Bernie Sanders.
But also happens to be Christian. Add that in there.
Okay.
So take how, how that works. No, add Christianity into it because that was a tool of suppression.
Well, that was a way for white men to get control, right?
Well, it was a way for many things to happen.
Didn't white men kind of, okay. You go into a church and it's, it's the, it's the man, it's always a man.
Why is Jesus white?
Always a man, right? The, the minister is always a man.
A patriarchal white supremacist society. So you have a white man as my savior. But a white man came and stole my people. Does, how does a person who stole you become your savior? Think about this in realistic terms. Christianity was the largest tool used in the slave, in slavery. It is in history, religion is. So remove America from the whole picture. If we are talking slavery in humanity. Over time through, since the beginning of time, religion is the number one tactic used, number one tactic used.
Well, they teach you all these good ethics, but then the people in power don't follow those ethics. You know, like in Christianity, they're all be the golden rule, do unto others as you would do unto yourself. And then it's kind of like what we were talking about before, the politician, he gets into one room and says one thing to an audience and then he gets into another. They just lie their asses off.
I think you should, but I think you should dig into the Bible. I want you to dig into the Bible. Because there's something else. No, I'm not Christian, not religious, no sir. Um. I would love for you to dig into the Bible because, well, I mean, that's okay. I feel like these are conversations. Well, I want them to be mad because I want them to get, like, we need to be talking.
Yeah.
We can all be mad, that's okay. It's not anger that the problem, right? We need to come and sit and have a conversation. We need to be angry. Because we've all been lied to. We've all been lied to.
Back to what I was talking about. So you've got the poor, black, urban person voting for Bernie Sanders. Which is on the total opposite.
If they're voting.
Which is the total opposite side of the spectrum from what the poor, white, rural people are voting for, which is Donald Trump. But their economic interests are the same. So what's, what's going on is the mainstream media.
But why?
Is, don't, the mainstream media doesn't want us to know this. I mean, has Fox or MSNBC or CNN talked about any of this stuff that we're talking about now? No, because they use identity politics instead of talking about housing, instead of talking about. Um infrastructure, public transportation, whatever, climate change. I mean, they talk about climate change sometimes, but.
But that's all an excuse, Dolan. Let's be real. You and I both know we're poor, right?
So what I'm saying, do I do agree with me?
In my neighborhood, I know poor white people.
Sorry for interrupting you. So, what we have to do is in order for this thing to work out. We have to have the workers come together.
Do you know what time it is? I need to be mindful.
Okay, we're back. What time is it? Let's see what time it is. It's five eighteen.
Okay.
Okay, so what we were talking about was, yeah, we've got the white, poor people voting for Donald Trump and the uh black. Poor urban people voting for Bernie Sanders. So, but then the media, the media. Is, I mean, obviously identity politics, Black Lives Matter, all that stuff matter, like race and. It matters because like my dad, he told me himself, we are tribal, right? Like you're more likely to like be more. Leaned or more, be more attracted to someone who, whose genetics are similar to yours, right?
Yeah, that's science.
So it's human nature, human psychology, and that's kind of like what is, that's what makes. America unique is that we're really like the only country in the world, except for the continent of Europe. Where it's a melting pot of people from all different races, cultures, backgrounds, religions, whatever. But at the end of the day, if you can take care of the economics for everyone, then in a way, then the cultures will take care of themselves. But the only, with the exception of the police, like you have to have that conversation with your kids about the police, I don't, right? Because white privilege. So there is such thing as white privilege.
Well, not just the police. It's baked in every system. Hell, it's baked in you and me. It's baked in both of us. We just can't identify it because we're not willing to talk about it.
Right.
Unless or until we're talking about it, we're never gonna identify.
So what I'm saying is, what's the, what's gonna be the difference is voting, lobbying reform. Um access to our politicians, accessibility, transparency, accountability. Like that's why I like Juan Marcano, because every time I contact him, boom, he gets right back to me, right away. And but most politicians I contact in the Aurora City Council, they won't get back to me. Like even one. I really wanna mention names, but I'm not going to. So when we were talking about the minimum wage, about Alison Coombs' proposal for the minimum wage hike. I call this politician and I ask her. Oh, she's, oh yeah, I've had all these conversations with small businesses and they're not on board. I don't think, I don't know whether I'm or not I'm gonna be on board. And I'm like, oh, well, did you have a conversation with anyone who's making minimum wage? No?
Dolan, do you think that it does justice?
I wanna look back.
I wanna ask you a question before we go on, because what I just saw you do was enacting white supremacy. Because you said, I don't want to name the person who said, and then said what they said. Now what I want you to get from that.
Do you want me to say the person?
Well, I mean, that's up to you. I'm not asking you to do that. I just want you to take this in for a second. The more that we continue to hide the white supremacy in our community, the more white supremacy is happening behind closed doors. And so if we have a fear of naming the people who are enacting white supremacy.
So the person was Angela Lawson.
Well, it doesn't mean that just because you have black skin, doesn't mean that you don't carry out white oppression and white supremacy other, every day either. And that's why this is an important conversation to be held. Because we think that white supremacy is only with white people and that is not the truth. Black people carry out white supremacy every day. Asians carry out whites, Latinos, everyone. Carries out white supremacy every day because we are colonized. It is a mind frame. It is not, you're a bad person, I'm a good person. No, it's a culture, we're back to culture.
Washington DC is tr- is controlled by the white male masculine patriarchy. Silicon Valley is controlled by the white male patriarchy, masculine patriarchy.
The planet is controlled by white male patriarchy.
Wall Street is still controlled by the white male masculine patriarchy. And if you ask me, I mean, it's not really.
The planet.
Is it working for most people? No. But a lot of it has to do with.
But wait, timeout.
Yeah.
Is it working for you? Because you're not subject to what I am. You're not worried about burying your children. So see, here's where the differential comes in and this is where white supremacy takes a toll on us. Because you say, is it working for us? Well, I'd rather take your seat and your chair in what working with, working for us looks like. Because you have a privilege I don't have. Even though my father was a white man, so you have the privilege of saying.
Generational wealth kinda thing, like if I don't.
Anything. You can, you get to buy some new Crocs. I don't have croc money. You get to walk down the street and not get your brains blown out because you're walking and you happen to be white.
Yeah.
So you have to look at the layers of how this is not working. And so don't look at it from a white male perspective. Stop that.
Okay. So what we were talking about before, accessibility, accountability, um transparency, but also lobbying reform. Um voting reform, uh all these things, like authenticity, right? Like when was the last time we had real leadership? I would argue probably like Martin Luther King or Malcolm X. Or you know, whatever, Nelson Mandela, all these guys, but like. How do we, how do we change the system? So this is how we change it, is if we get the working people. To come by, uh to come together, right? Bring the working people together. But we're being divided because of. The big identity politics thing, the race talk. I mean, I don't know, you would probably disagree with me on that, but. How do we put our differences aside and bring the blue collars work, workers together to organize? Because a lot of them, they're too tired when they come, they feel like their voice doesn't matter. They're not even gonna try because they think that the leaders don't represent them. And they, they don't. But how do we create late leaders that really do come from the people and represent the people? How do we get people to pay more attention? How do we get people to stop staring at their phones when they get home from work? And actually go out and go to these meetings or pay, tune into the city council meetings? How do we not only give you someone, no, not, not hope, but like confidence? That they're actually worth something.
Stand up and do something as a regular, everyday person. Politicians aren't getting us anywhere. That's the only reason I even jumped into all of this madness. You think I don't, this is what I want to do? Absolutely not, absolutely not. I have a for-profit business and a nonprofit business. My heart is in helping people. I didn't come jump into this because I think I'm a politician. No. I jumped into this because my children and my grandchildren, your children, your. I jumped into this because my children and my grandchildren, your children, your grandchildren, they all depend on us. They depend on, it is our responsibility as Americans. My forefathers, just like your fa- forefathers built this nation. They built this nation. Do you think that we don't owe them something in there? They didn't fight for everything they fought for, for us to lay down and say, well, let them just have it back. I doubt that very seriously. Every day, your whiteness is in jeopardy. You're this much closer to being extinct on this planet. And that's a real reality that white people have to look at right now. That's why there is this idea of preser- preservation around whiteness in America. Save, make America great again. No, keep America white was the real stand-in conversation that was happening. Because white represents America. If we look even just at what ad campaigns do, right? Who is generally the people on a campaign? A white woman, a white man and a white child. It's whiteness. It is our, our entire globe. And so don't think that the sickness is just here in America. But the sickness is so prevalent in America. We're dying. We're literally, our whole entire nation is, is disintegrating before our eyes at our own hands. And if we, as the people, we the people do not stand up and we continue with politics. We'll continue to break ourselves down and divide to the lowest common denominator until we make the decision to multiply. This is what we're gonna see.
So back to the police department, the Aurora Police, Vanessa Wil- Wilson is the new chief. Uh, are we doing a good job with, uh, are they making the necessary reforms? I understand that they're trying to implement more. Psychologists and social workers, when if someone calls the cops and they're having an argument with their. Boyfriend or girlfriend like, and it, they consider it more of a mental health issue instead of like a physical violent issue, then they'll have. A social worker go, Denver is implementing this. You're probably on board with that. That's one of the reforms they're making, but are there any other major reforms that uh, you like what's going? So you, you're, you said that you don't think. Enough changes occurring in the Aurora Police Department.
No, there's not enough change happening in the APD, so. You, you touched, you always ask me one question with eight hundred questions attached to it, and so my brain is like. APD really has multifaceted layers of change. That no matter what changes you make, you can affect a culture. It, so if you're looking at changing the culture of anything, any culture. If they say it's a seven to ten year process, and I say that's a lie. Because if you look back through history of man and you're talking about changing a culture. It's virtually impossible. Cultures are going to do what cultures do because that is what influences us the greatest as human beings, culture. It's what dictates what we eat, what we drink, how we think, the way we move, how we love those around us. The things that we like to smell, everything, our language, everything is dictated by culture. And so when we're talking about the police, the culture originally was slave catching. That's not leaving. White supremacists started policing. You cannot think that that is going to change something. And so am I saying that we don't need public safety? Absolutely not. That is not the case. But police are still human beings. This blue lives matter shit must stop. We are saying that these are no longer human lives, these are human beings. If we say that our lives are changed by trauma and that's what sends us to a penitentiary, what is a police officer enduring all day long? Trauma, 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 trauma. Your brain is physically changed by trauma and we know this. So why are we not thinking about our fellow human being that puts on a blue uniform and goes and risks their life? And we're not saying their human life matters. We now made them some crazy superhero by saying blue lives matter to combat. Black lives matter. We must stop the combatants. We are human beings. Those people who go put on a uniform are not a blue life. They are a human life who has now been put on a pedestal. And when they fall, that hurts. You are damaging those human beings. That is unacceptable. We're giving sixty percent of a three hundred and sixty million dollar budget to public safety, AKA. Our largest contractor in the city of Aurora, APD. That's a problem because you're putting the weight of our citizens' safety on the shoulders of other human beings.
So do you think that the police in Aurora, do you think the funding for the police in Aurora should go up? Do you think?
No, it needs to shift. Go up, no way. No way. It needs to could dramatically go down. So let's talk about defund the police, because that's where you're going, and I think this is an important conversation to be held. People think when I say defund the police, I mean that we need to be a lawless society. That is ignorant. That is ignorance at its finest. What we don't need is slave catchers because no one here in the United States is a slave. No one here is a slave. Why do we need a continued slave catching force? That's a lie. We don't need it. We have grassroots community organizations. So everything you're talking about with like the CRT team. Um, which is the crisis response team in Denver, in Aurora. I helped set all of those things up, even at the state level. So what happens is this, they're not connected to the nine one one system. It's a totally different system that is being called into. So this is very conflictual on many, many levels.
Can you give us the, you probably don't have the phone.
I don't have the phone number off the top of my head, and in Denver it's way different than.
We can go to to get that phone number?
Shoot, I couldn't even tell you. You'd have to probably dial two one one in Denver, two one one to find out. Um, but it's a very different process in the communities that it's in. In Denver, it's one process where they're calling into nine one one. And then they're supposed to be dispatching the team, and it's not happening. I'm getting the calls from Denver. And in Aurora, it's a little bit different because they're trying to gain an outside, so APD started one, which is very different. And then there's an RFP that's happening, so a request for proposals happening with the city of Aurora. But also at the state level with Colorado Department or Colorado Department of Public Health and, um. I just lost the rest of it. An environment, I'm sorry. Um, and so. In theory, yes, is that what we want? Of course. We want someone to come and respond to someone who is having a mental health crises. It does not require our police. It doesn't. We're asking the police to be mental health advisors, to be, um, stand-in mediators. To be, um, social workers, to be all of these different things, and that's not what should happen, right? That's not what the police. And I don't even think that police should exist further. We need to rethink our entire setup. We have to. We must. You know, I look at alternative, um, models that are working across the globe. Not just in our nation, but across the globe, because we must start expanding our thoughts. We must start expanding the way that our community, um, is dealing with things on the overall. What is working? And other places, what is working? We have to think about this as humanity.
So I, I wanna talk a little bit about Elijah McLean because I, I, I was telling people. About that situation, giving people false information that I didn't know. I thought he had Asperger's, but he had asthma. Right, which is a big difference. What happened with Elijah McLean? He was walking home from the store unarmed, didn't have a criminal record. He was wearing a mask, but. Before the pandemic, that's still irrelevant.
It's all irrelevant because he was murdered. In a police contact.
He got into, so someone called the cops on him because he looks suspicious. Cause he had on a mask maybe, but and then so the cops came over. And I don't know what the cooperation was like, but it doesn't matter. If, if you're unarmed and you haven't done anything wrong.
Cooperate with you. I haven't done anything wrong. First of all, as a citizen of the United States, you have inalienable rights. I have done nothing wrong. I am walking down the street. I do not have to engage with you, Officer so-and-so. I don't have to. What are you talking to me for? And the moment. You come and engage with me and I say I've done nothing wrong, I'm breaking no laws, what do you need with me? And you tell me I'm not under arrest? I don't have to stop for you. See, we are ignorant in the United States as to what our rights are.
This happened. Two years ago, in August two thousand nineteen. And officers that, and officers and whoever worked the emergency management team or whatever, the EMTs. They were just indicted yesterday, so it took them two years to do this. But what happened was though the cops tackled him, whatever. Got him into the ambulance and injected him with ketamine.
No, he was injected with ketamine on the ground prior to being put in an ambulance. Behind the ear, enough for a thousand pound man, and he weighed a hundred and thirty pounds.
So they gave him an overdose of ketamine.
Is a horse tranquilizer.
This is a, okay, so my, I just wanna clear this up for the record. My roommate goes to the hospital, like if, if you're having mental issues, you can go to the hospital. For, they will do this for free. They will inject you with ket- ketamine. You'll get high and whatever, go on a trip, kind of like psychedelics. But, yeah, so I don't know how that's relevant, but anyway. They injected him and, yeah. Yeah, so he died. But they should not allow, personally, I don't think anyone should be allowed to inject any kind of substance into me without my consent, no matter what I've done.
It's like me running up and sticking you with a needle and injecting you with something and saying, this is a citizen's arrest. What? I'm an EMT. What? My son get, has had ketamine before because he has a brain issue. He is a severe epileptic. And he has a, a condition called paleontopolis syndrome, um, which induces seizures that last for hours at a time. And so he has had this. This is a rescue medication. It is a controlled medicine. His heart has stopped. They have had to use defibrillators on my son because of this. And the level of trauma that my child has experienced, I have watched what ketamine does personally on several accounts. I know what it does to a human being. I know what it has done to my son. I have watched it. Physically, I have had the conversations with neurologists about the damages that it does to him. With, uh, heart doctors, cardiologists about what it does to his heart. With, uh, pulmonologist about what it does to his lungs. Ketamine is not a drug that you can give to someone and you don't know what they're on, you don't know their medical history. It should never, ever be administered without careful consideration, period. You can die literally. And we watched it on film.
So basically, the, the question is, um, what, where do we go from here? The problem was, was that they kept the investigation private and they weren't giving us answers as to what was going on.
No, the problem was that they did not charge and convict the officers who blatantly murdered Elijah McLean. That is the problem. I don't care what they did in the intermittent. They never charged these officers. And let's be clear. Do we feel good about the idea that there was? Sure, great, but let's talk about what the outcome of that is potentially.
So what I'm saying is, is that it had to take a movement in order for them to cooperate, in order, in order for the authorities to. Spew out the information that the public deserve to have, right?
They still haven't.
Yeah, so it's a matter of accountability, transparency, accessibility, all these things. So, um, yeah, but let's.
If the shoe were on the other foot, let us be clear, it would not take an indictment. If Elijah McLean murdered an officer, he would already have been tried, convicted, and on his way to an electric chair. If we still had the death penalty in Colorado, please be clear, if he even lived after the fact that he killed an officer. In the brutal manner that he was murdered. We can't even play this game anymore, like the. So this is the crazy part of what I see playing out in our society. We have a video of someone being brutally murdered. And then we have someone who is narrating that video as if our eyes can't see. Oh, he's struggling. What? He has seven hundred pounds on his back. We must stop playing games and stop acting like we're not seeing what our eyes are seeing. And allowing someone to narrate what we already know to be true and making that our truth.
And then so after it happened, didn't like two cops went to the scene from where it happened? And they were making fun of it.
Their friend was sad. One of the other officers who killed Elijah McLean was really sad and really depressed. Because he was murdered apparently. I don't know, his child was murdered maybe, huh? No, that's not what happened. He was sad and depressed. They made a video reenacting it, and that's what they got penalized for? That's how he got fired. That was the only way that someone gets fired because they make a video, reenacting and making fun of the homicide that they had committed?
So, yeah, I mean, I, we can go on about, like, even there was an incident where like. These black children were like pinned to the ground and.
On hot concrete, and that was last summer. So there was a group of young black women and a young black boy. They were put on over hundred and thirty degree asphalt because supposedly their car, their minivan was stolen. And that's a damn lie because supposedly the stolen vehicle that they were looking for was a motorcycle. With a Wyoming or a Montana license plate or some ridiculousness, you know. It doesn't matter. I mean, even with the guy who just got pistol whooped the thirty times, you know? They hired an officer, if, look at CPR and look at his rap sheet. His rap sheet impersonating an officer. Hiding a body.
Who's CPR?
Uh, Colorado Public Radio. So on their website, they put up, um, this gentleman's background report. He was hired. And the chief of police looked at his background report before he was hired. He had impersonated an officer. He had hidden a body. He had, um, pulled out a shotgun on his roommate. This man had more than thirty charges. Way more than my rap sheet. I got one. I got some driving stuff, but I, I have one charge, right? This man has violence after violence after violence, after incredulous. I mean, that does not show integrity and moral and character. Why would this be an individual that you hire as an officer? Someone to protect the community. This individual hit a body according to his background check. Um, my background check has been scrutinized. The Fraternal Order of Police shared my background check. And I found that interesting. Thank you for saving me that money, Mark Sears. Um, because my background check actually details and exposes the city of Aurora more than it exposes me. I was on juvenile diversion when I was twelve years old and it was downhill from there. You can clearly see from my background check what happened and what fell through the cracks. And how I was felonized over and over for things that I should have been helped for. And so we talk about we're a system and a, a society of restoration. That is not the case if you are a black woman. No matter what privilege I came from, um, it did not keep me from the black experience.
So let's go to minimum wage. So Alison Coombs made a proposal to raise the minimum wage. But to twenty dollars an hour by twenty twenty seven. Did, did you support her?
Fully. And I felt like it was still too low. I still felt like, um, where we were at, we were not raising the income enough. For a livable wage for our families.
Do you think the minimum wage should be a livable wage? What do you think the minimum wage should be right now?
Twenty-two to twenty-five an hour. Much more than what we're seeing right now.
And what do you think about, uh, so just recently Alison Coombs made a proposal to create a climate action committee. Abolish the oil and gas committee, but then, you know. But, and then they voted on keeping both of them. And with adding the climate action committee and that got shot down, so are you in support of eliminating the oil and gas committee? And creating the. Create the climate action committee, but do you want a couple of the representatives from the oil and gas committee to come over to the climate action committee?
Well, I think, uh, well, I, I feel like this, I would like to have a moratorium to decide. Because I need an educated conversation about, is that going to make sense if I just eliminate oil and gas? Because that is a major different lane, right?
Do you think that oil and gas, the oil and gas industry generally speaking in Aurora should re- continue to receive tax breaks when operating? Do you think green tech, so, uh, clean energy like solar wind, geothermal, they should receive tax breaks when operating in Aurora?
I think so, yes.
Do you think that climate change is caused by human beings, global warming, the carbon footprint, is that? As the carbon footprint goes up exponentially, so does, uh, global warming, and that's created by humans?
Of course.
So it's carbon emissions?
Indubitably. We can't even act like it wasn't. It was funny because we saw Greta Thunberg and in January of twenty twenty, right? She was here in Colorado. I went and saw her. She had this whole thing and she was talking about climate change and that we must do something immediately, immediately. And everybody said, no, we cannot do this. We cannot do this. We cannot change our carbon footprint. And then. Covid hits, right? Our carbon emissions. Our carbon emissions changed a hundred percent, right? We were no longer, sometimes the planet's gonna sit you down, we as humans. We have a tendency to overextend our planet and we've seen it throughout the human experience on the planet. And, um, one of the things that we're not thinking about is the way that civilizations have ended. It has been a natural disaster, um, things like a pandemic. Excuse me, and war, those are the three ways, violence, something happening natural. And then something happening with humans in health, right? These are the three ways that civilizations end historically on our planet. Our planet gets rid of us, we all catch some disease and sickness or we eliminate each other with violence, these are the three ways. And last year in twenty twenty, all of those were upon us, think about that. We were looking at all three of those things coming to fruition and we literally got sat down and said. Don't move right now, and I feel like that was such an important time for our entire planet, it was an important time. We got to see the way that our president was operating in that time, right? We got to see the good, the bad, the ugly, and that's a requirement for us to change and be better. I feel like somehow COVID was a gift to us in a lot of ways, you know what I mean? Um, yeah, I just felt raindrops. So I felt like COVID was a gift to us on the planet because it allowed us to examine our humanity. It was the tie that bound us together whether we wanted it to or not. None of us were free of it, I don't care if you were white or black. If you were brown, yellow, green, orange, purple, if you were a human being, guess what, you were subject to COVID no matter what.
What do you think of universal, have you heard of universal basic income? So it's the idea that everyone starting at the age of eighteen would receive a base amount of money, whether they're working or not. For basic survival needs like food and shelter and yeah, so if you're a billionaire, you'd get it. Kind of like social security, but you don't have to work for it.
Well, I don't, I don't know.
I think it's coming is because of, uh, technology is developing so rapidly with artificial intelligence, but then also you have immigration. So you have people coming in here from all these different countries, so it's creating more competition, but also you have globalization where. Jobs are being manufactured or jobs are being shipped overseas to China and Southeast Asia. For ma- for manufacturing, but also white collar jobs are now being shipped overseas. My brother works in the financial industry and his secretary's job was shipped to India. So my brother is interacting with someone with India as his secretary on a regular basis. And then someone I know who works in the Amazon warehouse, right here in Aurora, his, the HR in that warehouse was. Shifted to the Philippines, so if they have any issue with they, they need HR, they just. Pop up their computer and turn on Zoom, so basically what's happening is the rich world countries. Are facing all this competition, so hi- high speed internet is coming to the whole world. Within the next five, ten years, everyone's gonna have a smartphone, everyone's gonna have high speed internet through Starlink.
And there's no mandates on in- on income and what you're.
So are, are we there yet?
We're not there yet, our planet is not quite there yet, um. I think the, the United States has a great deal of control over that situation. And we need to be looking at that as a nation, what does that look like? I think the reason that there's a gateway for it was because of what we saw with unemployment. Unemployment was the opening crescendo to what you're talking about, because think about this. Prior to COVID, we were always being told what we couldn't get, we couldn't get universal healthcare, we couldn't get our kids to get a computer to work. Or to learn from home, um, we couldn't get, uh, up to date materials. We couldn't get, um, unemployment or things to help sustain the everyday human being that. Ends just weren't meeting, but then COVID happens. And then all of a sudden, the money we print can just happen, right, everybody was getting money. Um, people were getting fifteen hundred dollars, six thousand.
So do you think that we overshot the monetary?
We didn't do enough, we have, we still haven't done enough, the moratorium being lifted and, um.
You're talking about the eviction moratorium?
Right, so the, so the eviction moratorium and the moratorium is ending on, um, mortgage companies as well. Because all of those foreclosures were in a different space, so you know, that is also being affected in this. That's a different part that we're not discussing, what about the people whose mortgages are now coming out of that easement? What happens, they're still going to lose their home, right? We're not talking about that, we need to be talking about this, we have homeowners who have not been able to pay their mortgage in almost two years now. We're at a year and a half mark of this, now you're lifting these moratoriums on rent, on mortgages, what happens? What happens and all of these companies are coming in and building? These, and all of these companies are coming in and swooping up all of these homes and buying them, it's investment companies that are, it's not people.
So would you be willing to pay more, uh, taxes for more government assistance when it comes to housing in Aurora?
No, we don't need to do that, we need to tap into corporations that are coming in and robbing and raping us.
Do you know anything about, so you're talking about like corporations are allowed to freely come in and buy up houses? And you're saying houses should be for families, not for corporations? Uh, do you know anything about community land trusts?
Yes, lots of it.
Okay, are you in favor of community land trusts?
They work against us and so this is an interesting conversation that's been held for quite some time. People believe that community land trusts really work and I just want people to take one example and run with it. So there was a school in Park Hill, um, that ended up going under, they did not stay in business, that was a community land trust building. Um, the space was, right, so the building that was built on that space, so when you're talking about a community land trust, you're talking solely about the land itself. Not about what is built on the land, so I'll help you to understand how it's set up. So say you've got this land, there's nothing here, right, nothing exists. This is put as a community land trust, but then someone comes in and says, I wanna use this and they build a building on it, right? The building is now a five million dollar building. The land trust doesn't help you to secure the five million dollar building. Do you understand where I'm going with that? So you can't get the building, you can't ever own the property, it doesn't matter if that property is in a land trust. Because we will never be able to own the building that sits on the land. You have put it in a place that allowed for white people with lots of money, that one percent that we're talking about. To continue to play monopoly with us.
Okay, so for all of you out there, look up community land trusts and make your own decision.
Get educated on what they are and how redlining, gentrification and access to mortgages all go together. And how that is a tool of white supremacy and oppression as well.
So have you heard, so it sounds like, would you, are you for increasing vouchers for rental assistance? Are you for increasing, uh, funding for rental assistance and, uh, mortgage assistance and that kind of stuff? Basically, how, how do we solve the, uh, housing crisis, just the housing prices are going through the roof?
There needs to be restrictions on what a housing price can be. You can't charge a million, like this home, for instance, that I live in, was built in like nineteen eighty-four. It is a five bedroom, single family home, less than twenty-five hundred square feet, I'm sure. Um, this home, when I moved into it, was purchased, um, by the people who own it. For, um, under a hundred thousand dollars by a HUD, they are investors, they own thirty properties, probably more by now. Um, and now this same home, I've lived here for ten years, this same home is over a half million dollars. A half million dollars.
So basically we're, we're worried about displacement, we're worried about all these things and housing is the central core. Okay, we're gonna get to that too, but, um, so with housing and economic, yeah, housing. How, what kinds, so you're for creating incentives for the developers to create more affordable housing?
No, I'm not gonna create an incentive for a developer, I am going to require that they build more affordable housings. Housing units into anything and I'm gonna tax them at a higher rate. Why are they making millions and billions of dollars in singular transactions? And they're outing, they're redlining people from.
Vouchers, increasing rental.
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that that is a mandatory.
What about the city of Aurora building actual apartments, affordable housing, actual building? Do you think the city of Aurora potentially, do you like that idea of the city actually getting in the business of construction, constructing? Apartments that are affordable?
I think they have to, but I think in a lo- larger framework, we have to be talking about generational wealth and making people homeowners in Aurora. In Aurora, you're more likely to be a felon than you are to be a homeowner right now.
Okay, so economic development, this ties into this. So the Democrats want it, the, everyone wants it, all the people in power want it, cause all they care about, in my opinion, is the equity of their house going, going up. They just care about the money, um, so how do we create smart growth so that people aren't displaced? Uh, corporate America just comes in here and bulldozes over everything and the local community never benefits, it's just corporate America. So how do we make it so that with economic development, you, everyone within the local community will rise up as well? And how do we, you know, prevent mass displacement from happening? Cause usually when you have economic development, that means it's great for rich people, it's great for people who own their own property. But then it's everyone who rents, it just gets left in the dust. And you, yeah, like even like Ruben Medina, he's with, if you go to his campaign site. He's standing right in the center of Bicentennial Park, which is a great, yet the birds are chirping, they've got. Video of the water, video of a great scenery of nature, right? And meanwhile, he's saying, on this land, I want to build a concert venue, I want to build a recreation center. Well, you already have that right there with Mother Nature, just let people bring their instruments there. And play, you don't need an actual structure to do it, you, you already have the recreation center, that's what a park is. So I'm worried about like, don't bulldoze the park, I mean, sorry, Ruben, like, I support you, but like for. To be putting that video on your website, like.
But wait a minute, I wanna be clear, because what you said was really impactful, you're like, sorry, Ruben, but I support you. But you just said that you don't support Ruben because you.
I don't support that aspect of act, yeah.
But is that support, but then can you support Ruben, I want you to sit.
I'm not canvassing for him.
Not even from the perspective of you as an individual, so don't take it personal, I'm saying, if we're pushing back and we're saying. I don't support the idea that you bulldoze a natural element in our community to put up. A man-made venue for what you're saying we need and it exists in that natural space. Can you really support that? Because then what if Ruben comes and says, hey, Dolan, I wanna build a penitentiary right next to your house? In this beautiful space that used to be a park, do you support that too?
So that's the, we gotta start naming names, right?
Well, we have to start naming the things that are not productive for human beings. We're talking about things that are furthering political agendas, that are furthering corporate interests. That's not building something that makes economic viability, understand that, building some. Twenty billion dollar, uh, event center does not create economic viability. For our counterparts in Ward One that aren't even making seventeen thousand dollars a year. And probably have a family of five to feed.
Yeah, so this is the current council, everyone wants it, Democrats and Republicans. They want to compete against Denver, so we, they want to be a central hub, so we want a central downtown. Cause I guess Aurora doesn't really have, you have the Southlands, you've got over up there, but Alameda and two twenty-five, whatever. But like, why are you trying to compete against Denver, you're just gonna lose, like, why don't we consti- it's already not working.
Why is this winning and losing though, because what's losing is our human beings, our human beings are dying. They're not, they can't eat, they don't have a place to live, they are houseless. And now we're pushing them around like garbage. We're duplicating the problems of Denver, we're not competing with Denver, let's be clear. We are actually going to outgrow and supersede Denver in the next five years, we can build out, we have landmass, Denver can only build up. Let's be clear, we are now a metropolitan area. We are going to supersede Denver in the next five years, I promise you we are, I promise you, mark my.
In terms of just population and all that?
In population and.
So they say that it actually makes more sense to build up, cause it's less expensive if you build up. But everyone's like, oh, I want the view of the mountains, so we don't wanna build too high. I don't know if there's a law saying you can't build over five stories in Aurora or whatever, because everyone wants to view the mountains, is there a law?
There are zoning laws and it depends where you are, so.
What do you think about building, so. Infrastructure is less expensive if you build up, so because of that fact alone, would you be in favor of building up instead of urban sprawl? But then you have, what do you call it? So that, that's metro districts.
Right. Well, I think we're gonna have to tangle in a lot of those spaces because of several. So we're in a really strange climate that is requiring that we look at a lot of things that we haven't, right? So Aurora has several issues we're tangling with right now, our health department is falling apart, Tri County Health. When Douglas County leaves, that is no longer Tri County Health, that's a new animal, right? Then we're talking about redistricting because of the growth within the city of Aurora and adding a new judicial district, right? So there are many things that are happening because of population, because of growth. That we have to start addressing, we don't have infrastructure for roads, every year we're looking for twenty million dollars just to fill potholes. Um, we're not talking about many things that have to be addressed, right?
So the problem with the metro districts is that they will lay down the infrastructure, they'll pay for the infrastructure, but then. But then the city of Aurora has to pay for it going forward once it's laid down.
Which is exactly what has happened.
If you build up, you won't have to pay for the infrastructure over time, like you would if you had urban sprawl and we just go closer and closer to Kansas. Is it over time, it would be more expensive if, if we had, if we build out instead of up?
Well, whether we like. Well, I don't, look, I'm from Colorado, I, I'm concerned about the human beings, the mountains are gonna be there, right? Here's the concern that I have and the reality is, whether we make a decision that we wanna build up, it doesn't matter. Because developers are here, they are purchasing the land and they are developing, period. All these lots and plots that are out here, they're getting snatched up left and right, a house is on the market for fifteen minutes. And people are literally bidding two hundred thousand dollars over the asking price within four minutes. Within four minutes, we do not have housing in Aurora, so whether you build up or you build out, it's happening.
City Council have the power to shape. The laws regarding development and. Do you think that because everyone on the, who serves on the city council owns their own property? They want that juicy, juicy equity, they, and that's just part of human nature, right? Whether you're Democrat or Republican, they want the juicy, juicy equity on their homes. The only person on the city council who does not own their own home is Alison Coombs, just wanted to put that out there. But do you think because of that alone, nothing's gonna get done, it's just gonna be eternal economic growth? Everything's gonna get bulldozed, it's gonna be one big slab of pavement. Because you just care about your equity on your house.
The takers will always be the takers, as my grandmother would say, you know.
Man, that's human psychology. If I had my own house, I'd want the juicy. So there's, so we're screwed, if you're renting, you're screwed.
If you're renting, you are screwed, yes, indubitably, you're no, you're on the hamster wheel that never ends. The never-ending hamster wheel, um, and we have to discuss what does that look like? Um, how do we increase homeownership in Aurora? How do we, how do we get there, we've never ever seen that really happening in Aurora, there are some programs. In other counties with housing unit, um, housing authorities that I think are important for homeownership in Adams County. If you are on housing, they can take a percentage of what you pay in and rent and put that in an escrow account to be a down for a home ownership program. Um, we need to do those things here in Aurora, we need to make the pathway for everyone to be a homeowner.
So we're gonna keep this raw and real here.
Yeah, please do.
So we're gonna start naming names, cause I'm mad. Um, so Crystal Maria. Who is the chair, or was the chair, I don't know if she still is, of the housing committee. By the way, they don't show the housing committees on YouTube. But, nothing, nothing has gotten done. And then right when the election comes around, she comes out with this resolution saying. Housing is a right and everyone votes for it and then she puts it on her Facebook page saying, I got this resolution passed. A resolution is not a law and she's not giving us any details as to how she changed housing at all. She's on the, same with Alison Coombs, Alison Coombs is on the committee, I don't know if she still is, but. Crystal Maria was on the, was the chair for many years, I think four years or something, but we can't see what they're doing because. We can't watch it on TV, whatever, on YouTube, s- nothing's gotten done and then. Nothing's gotten done. And then right when the election comes around, she starts posting like crazy on her Facebook page about all kinds of things. Saying we need this and that, saying we need this, we need that, we need this. Okay, but did you get any ordinances passed? What policy have you implemented? It just really makes me mad. So has Allison, or has Crystal Maria done anything for housing in Aurora? If so, please let me know what she has done.
I wish that I could just like run out a track record of what she had done. One of the things that I know that Crystal has done within housing is go and talk about the number of housing units at several of the low-income housing, um, projects around the city of Aurora, especially in wards one, in Ward One, um, because it had the largest, um, concentration of housing units. It was the, um, place where most of our public housing units were at. And so I know that she has worked inside of Ward One around increasing the number of public housing units, um, that are there. Uh, but also in trying to attract, um, private owners into, um, supporting people who are on vouchers. Um, I know that she also was talking with people who were not on housing and eliminated some of that waiting list because there was like an eleven-year waiting list in the city of Aurora for housing. Um, and so I know that she worked towards some of those things, but you also have to remember, inside of every committee, it's not just a chair. You are dependent on a committee. And don't forget the politics that's happening in our city. We are strict, we are strictly divided down the center and there is no middleman right now. There's no one who is creating that.
About it is that she's not mentioning anything about the big developers coming in. Zillow, Vanguard.
Right, right.
Zillow, Vanguard, whatever, Berkshire Hathaway, just Red, BlackRock, just gobbling everything up. She's not even having these conversations. She's not even mentioning the names of these companies on her Facebook page. Or anywhere on social media.
So.
And no one really.
So I have a question because this is an interesting psychological point that I noticed.
Crystal, I support you for reelection. You're very progressive. You're the most progressive person on the council, so I support you, but that, I, sorry, I gotta throw the heat at you. This is what I think. I'm, you said go raw, go real.
I, I love this. I do love it. And you know, I think that's part of the reason that the, um, Aurora Majority Project happened because I am the minority. I'm the only Democrat in Aurora that is not supported on the Aurora Majority Project ticket. I am the Aurora Minority Project. Hey, raise the roof.
Okay, but like, that's, that's, that's because you didn't start your campaign until later on because of.
Just because someone doesn't plan for you, Dolan, doesn't mean.
ACLU, right? Or the, because you were a felon. At first, you weren't allowed to run because of the, the charter and the code saying that if you're a felon, you can't run, so. But why didn't you, why didn't you, why didn't you start canvassing and running even before that? You could still knock on doors, right?
Uh, no, uh-uh. That would have been a violation under the charter. I can't, I can't be out here campaigning and doing that. If I'm not, I, if I'm not allowed to run, does that make sense?
But are you still allowed to campaign for yourself?
No. I, I, look, my campaigning looks much different than campaigning in the, in the actual physical sense. Because my campaign is much different. Remember this. My campaign required a lawsuit. So my campaigning was inside of the ACLU. That was campaigning for me. Don't ever forget that.
Okay, let's go back to Crystal Maria.
Okay.
So what were we talking about, Crystal Maria? I'm not gonna let her off the hook on this one.
So I think that it's interesting what you said because you said she didn't put anything on Facebook.
Project. You were saying how you got screwed with the Aurora Majority Project.
Oh, I'm not screwed with it at all.
So you're saying that like.
Themselves, you know, that's not, yeah.
So with the, with like, whatever, politics within the Democratic Party, are you upset with or?
I mean, politics in any way, shape and form, I'm not a politician.
With the Democratic Party of Arapahoe County?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Do you wanna, we don't have to talk about it, cause it doesn't really.
Their, their anti-blackness is known. Meredith, um, was on Dope Black Thoughts and admitted to being anti-black and working towards being better. Um, Kristin Mallory Westerberg has been anti-black. I mean, anti-blackness is real. I am the only black candidate. I have zero support and the party said they would support me fully if a black woman, and not even me, a black woman, period. A black person coming into the race.
So I have a question for you. Is it?
Please.
Is it the responsibility of the leaders from the Democratic Party to reach out to the candidates? Or is it the responsibility of the candidates to reach out to the Democrat, Democratic Party, or is it a mix of both?
I think when you have a viable candidate.
Did, did the Democratic Party of Arapahoe County, have they been talks with you at all? Like?
They've been talking about me.
Did you contact them at all though?
Um, no, Kristin Mallory Westerberg has texted me, but what I won't do is be in conversation with someone who has done racist things to me. Why am I going to engage with a racist? You are oppressing me. I can't do that. It would be irrelevant. Why am I going to continue to do that? So you're sitting next to me with your KKK outfit on, right? Hypothetically, and I'm not saying you directly.
Do you like my shirt?
Do you like my shirt? I love your shirt. The pink is fabulous. At least you didn't put a white hood on.
Matches love is love.
It does. Um, so if we sit down next to each other, is it more productive for me to sit next to you as a white supremacist, a known white supremacist, to change your mind? Is that productive for me as a black person? Is that really productive? Is that changing the narrative in any way, shape or form? No, sir, it is not. I don't need to sit with you and have a conversation with you if I know that you are going to continually block me because of the color of my skin.
Okay.
That's wasted energy. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's like saying, please, help me, help me, help me, help me. The only thing you're gonna help me do as a white supremacist is to die. Is to die, either economically, physically, mentally, you're, you're killing me. You're literally killing me.
Alright, so let's go to infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what the Aurora City Council is responsible for when it comes to infrastructure, like public transportation, like RTD? Like the buses, so like the frequency of the buses, how like increase the routes, increase the frequency of the buses. Does, does the Aurora City Council have any jurisdiction over any of that? Or do you know specifically what the Aurora City Council is responsible for when it comes to infrastructure?
Well, in technicality, we are responsible as Aurora City Council to figure out infrastructure, but it's not been a conversation that's been held. Right? So we're dealing from an empty bag every month, every year, every election cycle. It is constantly an empty bag. So we're looking for things that don't exist in order to support the city. We do not have a collaborative management partner within our city that makes all systems talk. And that's why I'm saying we have to delve into some things right now because of the growth of our city, because of the disconnect from regional transportation station district, because of the disconnect with the education systems. We have multiple, um, school districts. We have multiple counties. We have, there are too many multiple things that are overlaying and overlapping that we must dig into. We don't have infrastructure for roads. We don't have infrastructure for transportation.
Okay, so would you be willing to put more money into busing, more frequent routes, uh, more routes, period?
Well, before I even do that, we need to have a collaborative management partner that comes in and gets the people who provide those services like RTD in here. They need to pay for that. They are making money off of this. That is another yet corporation. We need to tap in, right? So Walmart's here. Tap into Walmart. Quit letting them make eighty billion dollars on the corner of Ilef and Chambers without paying in to the collective community. We keep talking about small businesses. Well, look, our small businesses will never thrive if we are not tapping into corporations and taxing them at a rate that makes sense. Because they don't pay our people living wages, we are going to continue the cycle. Continue the cycle. Hold them accountable, hold them accountable, hold them accountable, hold them accountable.
So do you, do you want Aurora to become like a, a metropolis? Or do you want it to become, do you like it the way it is? Do you wanna be?
We are a metropolis.
Like, but like, do you want it to be like the next Chicago or something? Massive skyscrapers everywhere? Or do you want it to be more like a suburb of Denver? Like, what's your fantasy of Aurora becoming?
It's not about my fantasy and what it becomes.
Cause that's what you want. That's your envision.
Well, I think that we have to have realism come into play.
Big metropolis, or do you want a more of a suburb?
Uh, well, we are a suburb. I don't want us to have skyscrapers build. So first of all, Aurora was developed as a bedroom city. Okay? A bedroom city, meaning that we are an outside suburb where people live, not work. Denver was our working city. Aurora is a bedroom city originally, right? And so as things have changed and population and gentrification and redlining and all of these things have played a role. Aurora was the push-to place where everyone was pushed to, right, via gentrification. And so what has happened is we are now looking at corporations coming into our city and making money off of the backs of our citizens, but damaging our actual environment without any accountability. So again, Aurora's issue continues to be accountability, accountability, accountability and accountability. We have a police department with no accountability. We have corporations coming in here making billions of dollars in our community. But we are not charging them. We have developers coming in and they are not being charged and taxed at a rate that makes them accountable for what is happening, growth, pollution. I mean, we can go on and on and on about all these connectors, but at the end of the day, we need to start having a group, a collaborative management program that looks at all of our systems and that helps us to correlate those systems. Because right now, systems don't communicate. And it is making the trajectory for our city an issue. That is why the problems keep compounding. Because we are not thinking about as we grow, what happens next? How are we incorporating RTD? How are we separating ourselves from Tri-County Health? How are we now creating a municipality? Cause we are. By numbers, we are now a municipality, right? We, we're a metropolitan area, right? We have grown so much in numbers alone.
Okay, so what's the plan for eradicating homelessness? I know that Mayor Kaufman wants the camping ban, same thing as what they did in Denver. Um, but there's no place to put them. There's a Salvation Army thing where they have the tents set up and they're planning on building a shelter in like two to three years. Um, but you know, it's a combination of mental health, uh, substance abuse, lack of affordable housing.
That's a lie, that's a lie, that's a lie. It is a culmination of economics, period.
Okay.
If we wanna really get down to the nitty-gritty, this is all economic.
Your plan for eradicating homelessness?
Well, it has to be multifaceted. So let's get down to it. It has to be multifaceted because we have to create channels where there is post-secondary education. Regular colleges is not the thing in twenty twenty-one. I can just tell you now. I work with youth. I know. Even adults. We are having to shift because again of technology, like you pointed out, right?
We're going through the digital revolution?
Period. We are in a revolution.
You have to be a lifelong learner.
Period.
You have to learn a lot faster than you did thirty, forty years ago before. So it's the.
Different things. We're being phased out by technology.
Immigration. We're gonna be competing against Africa, South, South America because of, everyone's gonna have high-speed internet. Everyone's gonna have a smartphone. Everyone's gonna be educated without having to go to school, really, through, you know. So, sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'm just fired up right now.
That's okay, Dolan. It's your show.
No, this is your show. This is the people's show.
Yeah, I think that, um.
And, and Aurora's show.
You know, coming back to the ideas of like what needs to happen and what my plan would be. My plan is to look at the areas where, where people, human beings are not being supported.
Oh, sorry. So I have a question. Yeah, so if I own a car, should I be allowed to sleep and live in that car on a public, public parking lot?
I feel like you're asking me for solutions to a problem that exists in.
No, it's.
Within economics.
This is a simple question. If I am living out of my.
That's what you need to do. Why wouldn't the parking lot be? I mean, the planet is a free.
Okay, so Candace says if you're living out of your car, you can park in a parking lot, public lot and, and stay in your car. I agree. I, I think.
Lot, a public lot. Because then again, I think it goes back to privatization because we have small businesses, right? And they're being inundated because their private, you know, building space where they run a small business is being inundated. And I get that too. I'm a small business owner, right? And so I think that we have to start providing places like that, spaces like that. Because otherwise, then it becomes the responsibility of all of the community once again, right?
So currently, it's illegal for me to do this if I were to buy my own land and not build a house on it and pitch a tent?
Yes.
As long as I keep that area clean, do you think that should be allowed?
Yes. Why not? Why not? Yes.
Yeah. And so going back to the, so I was at the Heather Gardens debate the other day and a guy said, this is what you do. You take all the homeless people that wanna go to, go out into the prairie, set up tents out there, right? And then give them the services they need, if they want it. They can choose not to have it if they don't want it, whatever. And then so have a shuttle, take them to and from the campsite so that they can get those services, healthcare, whatever, mental health, substance abuse, help them find a job. But what do you think of that? Setting up a big, cause they do it for immigrants, right? Like if you look at the board, you look pictures on national news, like you've got, they've got these air-conditioned tents, by the way. They're temperature-controlled. So if they can do it for the immigrants, why can't they do it for citizens, right? But as long as it's a temporary thing and provides services for them.
But I think what you're referencing is like detaining camps, right?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about for homelessness.
Oh.
So like, they're, look at all that open prairie, like, there's nothing there.
You're saying when you're referencing, like, they're doing it for the immigrants. I don't know what, are you referencing like the detaining camps?
But they're, they're temperature-controlled tents.
It doesn't matter. You're in jail.
And some of them are.
You're in jail.
I, I don't know the details about that. Okay, okay. But anyway.
You don't get to make a phone call. You don't know where your loved ones are. You don't have, speak the same language. You're not allowed to leave. Why? I'm a human being. Why do I have to stay here? That is incarceration.
Saying is, do you think that's a good idea to set up tents out in the prairie? There's nothing there. There's nothing going on. And then have, and then have a shuttle.
Why do we do that? Why as Americans, why as humans do we take our problem and move it way over there? We look at this like this is a problem.
Option to do that. They don't have to.
Hmm.
And then give them the option to have services, like helping them find a job, giving them, um, counseling, giving them of substance abuse support, whatever. Or do you think that's too expensive?
I don't know that that's the answer. And I would honestly have to sit in a space with people who do this and know what the outcomes are. Because I'm not the type of person who jumps into anything without prior education. Like I have to ask some very important fundamental questions around what has worked. Are there, is there something that shows me that this works? What leads you to believe that this is going to work? What are the things that will be in the community that support safety for everyone there? Like there are a lot of questions and superlatives that need to be answered within that conversation. I wouldn't make a jump to, um, delineage, and I'm not an expert inside of that. I say that all people deserve, um, to be treated with human decency and respect. Dehumanizing people by taking their belongings, no matter if it's in a trash bag and it looks like trash to you or not, I don't care. You don't have the right to take someone's stuff and throw it away and tell them they have to move from where they physically are. It's dehumanizing. They have nowhere to go. Where are they going? To the next bridge, to the next what? We're just passing the buck. That's what's happened from Denver to Aurora. All of the issues, and so I feel like.
So I, so what Mayor Kaufman did, uh, when he went out and was homeless for a week.
Respectful as shit. He was not homeless. He wasn't homeless for a moment. He wasn't ever homeless. And it is so disrespectful. The man was never homeless. He put on an outfit, he painted his face, he went out there and acted the way he thought a homeless person acts. Someone without a home is not someone to be ridiculed. You don't dress up as them. It's disrespectful. It is not a choice in life and it is not because they are an addict nine times out of ten. The narrative that he painted was so dehumanizing and disrespectful. It was a game that he played. It was a game with human lives attached to it. It was the most disgraceful thing I have ever seen, ever, ever. Disrespectful. He should not have done that. He went there and acted like he was houseless. Sat there in those people's face and they told their story to him. He was a liar. He got to go home to the comfort of his home. He was a liar. That is a liar. That was a political stunt and that was propaganda. There was no human connection. There was no compassion. There was no empathy and there was no desire to change the circumstance of those human beings. He only did that to judge their circumstance and you better get the difference. Just because you judge me because I sin differently, doesn't make you better and it doesn't make me lesser. I don't know what you do, Mike Kaufman, in your personal life, but just because you said you were houseless and came here and played a game, it doesn't make you better than me. It does not. It does not make those people lesser than you because life handed them a different set of cards and maybe they just weren't willing to be as deceitful and disgusting as you were, Mike Kaufman.
So is there anything else that you, cause we're gonna go into, I wanna learn more about your, your background, your childhood, that kinda thing, but also, we're gonna do a lightning round as well?
Yeah, we're probably almost out of time. Do you know what time it is? Can we do a time check? Sorry, I have until six and I need to be diligent.
Oh, my phone is off.
Uh-oh. Time check! Oh, we're way over. I'm twenty-five minutes over.
Five more minutes.
Uh, I don't have five. I'm twenty-five minutes over. Two, yeah, like.
Two minutes. Okay, so we're gonna do a lightning round real quick with Candace Bailey. She's running for at-large. Uh, Aurora City Council, November second is the election, twenty twenty-one. A first question for you, and you can pass it, cuz some of these are very kinda hard because they're, you gotta, you really gotta dig deep. But, um, what is your favorite book?
Oh, I, it depends the genre probably. Depends the genre.
Okay. Who is your favorite politician?
None of them.
Okay. Who is your favorite philosopher?
My grandmother.
What's your favorite state aside from Colorado?
Hmm. It depends on what level, I think. Nature, um, things, I don't know. It would depend.
What's your favorite color?
All of them.
Uh, what's your favorite kind of food?
Um, I love Peruvian food.
Hmm. Nice. There's a Peruvian restaurant near where I live called Pico Sour.
Uh-huh, I go there, yeah. My girlfriend and I used to go there for lunch. Yeah, she recently passed away and so I was just talking about it yesterday. Um, cuz their food is great and she loved the green drink there, the sour, the Pico Sour, actually.
Uh, who's your favorite civil rights leader of all time?
Of all time?
Making these up on the spot.
Maybe Dick Gregory?
Dick Gregory? Okay, I'll have to look him up.
Was a comedian and so you wouldn't know he was a civil rights leader. Oh, my timer's going off. My husband's telling me time's up. Um, so I gotta go, but I think Dick Gregory, watch his documentary and find out about him. He was a comedian, but he was a revolutionary.
Alright, sounds good. Yeah, well, yeah, that's pretty much it. So, uh, the Aurora City Council's November second. Aurora City Council election is November second, twenty twenty-one. And Candace is running for the at-large seat for the Aurora City Council. And, um, basically, I just wanna thank you for sitting down with Aurora Ideas and I feel like this conversation was. Really a lot better than I thought it was gonna be. I didn't really know what to expect, but it, it went really well. We kept it raw and real and. I wish you the best of luck and I think Candace is a really good candidate. I think she's got a shot at winning this thing. But, uh, yeah, thanks again and, uh, yeah, it's heating up, but.
Yeah. Thanks for having me on Aurora Ideas. I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the questions. Um, I'm really open. I'm always open for conversation. People, I talk to people all day, every day. Um, that's just who I am as a human being. Um, I'm never not feet on the ground, boots on the ground. Reach out to me if you have questions for me.
So is there anything you'd like to tell the people of Aurora before we leave?
Um, my campaign is for you, with you and by you. I am powered by the people. I am not looking for corporate handouts, sponsorships. I am interested in the people of Aurora and making your lives better every day.
Nice, sounds good. Well, that's about it. Thanks, guys. Peace out.
Thanks. Bye, Aurora.